Oh, oh, I see.
I don't know what to say.
Um, you're very good.
Oh, yeah.
You're right here.
Yeah.
There, there, there.
Okay.
All right, thanks, I'm sure.
Yes, all right.
Yes, all right.
No, we're sorry.
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 I don't want to say anything.
I don't want to hear it.
Um, you're very good.
Oh, yeah.
You're right here.
Yeah.
There, there, there.
Okay.
Oh, I just be there.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not.
Who are you about to say?
Oh.
Yeah.
No, no.
Can they do that?
No.
Well, I'm just trying to be hot.
I saw like two.
Smile, smile.
If I can help, I'll try.
So I can finally make the press.
So.
Um, okay.
I don't have a press.
Don't cut your press.
All these classes count.
They're lucky, but.
I thought you could.
But she doesn't know the director.
Wait.
The classes.
Well, it wasn't.
I didn't think I could learn this.
That's not for us.
I know.
I got them because I teach in classes.
Well, they were like.
Well, when I was at, they were quite impressed.
I said, why is that?
Why is that law child?
So I.
I like.
So I mean, so.
I think that's too great.
I'm just never.
Uh, there's some.
Agenda is new business item.
Oh.
But I mean, I'm on.
Going to call the regular business meeting, the Yankton City Board of Commissioners session. Roll call, please. Oh, excuse me, we're start the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for attending. Roll call.
Benson?
Here.
Brunick? Sarda?
Here.
Hunoff?
Here.
Minor?
Here.
Mosher?
Here.
Villanueva?
Present.
Weber?
Here.
Mayor Schram?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denarder?
Here.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May 13th and special commission meeting of May 20th.
Move to approve? Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Number three on our agenda is the scheduled bills. I would like to note that we have a slight change to that. There was a purchase order for $721.42 under the janitor's closet line item. That was already paid, correct Lisa? And so we do not need to pay it twice. So that adjustment, that will be an adjustment in the invoice or in the scheduled bills. What is the motion for the bills?
Move to pay the bills. A second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Excuse me, we need to do a roll call. Thank you, former Mayor Mosher for correcting me. Roll call, please.
Minor?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Mayor Schram?
Aye. Motion carries. So we have a proclamation tonight. It is the Mental Wellness Conference and we're lucky enough to have Dr. Standage and some members of the committee here. We took pictures earlier, so we're not going to stop and do that, but I would like to read the proclamation for the Mental Health Wellness Conference. Whereas June 5th and 6th, 2024 are the dates when Yankton Area Mental Wellness Inc. will host the 26th Annual Yankton Area Mental Wellness Conference at Yankton High School. And whereas the overall mission is caring for self, caring for community, and the 2024 conference theme is embracing change, and whereas the commitment to training and networking is evident in Yankton, a community that is extremely concerned about serving those in need strives to educate students for future employment and healthcare and mental health, and represents a region rich in resources and professional expertise to educate others. And whereas Yankton Area Mental Wellness Inc. and professionals from Yankton, from South Dakota, from the Midwest and beyond, have joined forces to present a variety of sessions to educate conference participants with current information, available resources, a network of support, regional expertise, and professional credit. Now therefore, I, Mason Schram, Mayor of Yankton, do hereby proclaim June 5th and 6th, 2024 as Yankton Area Mental Wellness Conference Days in Yankton, South Dakota, and call upon the residents of this great city to join me in supporting mental wellness awareness. I think that deserves a round of applause.
And I believe, if anyone would like to say anything, Dr. Standage, you want to go to
the mic, but obviously Lewis and Clark, Vaybra Health and all of the mental wellness facilities that we have in the area do a huge, amazing job for our community, and this is a great thing that happens annually that we're fortunate to have.
Thank you. I'm Tom Standage, and I'm the Chair of the Yankton Area Mental Wellness Conference. I can't believe it, but this is the 26th annual conference. There's no way when we started this that I thought it would let go for 26 years. The Mental Wellness Conference really is a grassroots community effort. The sponsors and staff really represent all of the human service providers in the community. They work hard every year to put on a wonderful conference. It's June 5th and 6th this year. Please come if you can. Thank you for the proclamation.
Dr. Standage, if I can, while you're at the mic, can you give us an update on your building? It's hard to drive by and see, not notice the work going on. So I'm just curious how that's coming along on schedule and kind of what we can still plan to see if you would.
So I think, I think the first thing to point out is that we're really moving all of our services to one location, and most of you know that we've taken a lot of the first floor of the Benedictine Center. We have a large part of the third floor of the Benedictine Center. We have the old 1028 Walnut Dorm, which is about a 38,000 square foot facility. We have the Yellow House, which is our administrative building. So all of that will be moving into one location. I'm told that probably next week, we're going to be able to walk through the whole facility without getting our feet muddy. So all of the concrete should be done. You see the walls are going up. They've got most of the initial roofing on, the penthouses are coming up, and the HVAC stuff is going in the penthouse. So they're, they're coming, they are on schedule. We should be in there next July, so a year from, from this July. Thanks for asking.
Yeah, it looks wonderful.
We're excited.
It's fun to drive or walk by there and see all the work that's being done on there and seeing the vision that you and your team had to put that together when you came to the commission originally.
It's, it's, it's going to mean a lot to us when we can have crisis care located with all of our other facilities and we don't have to drive people across town and when we're dealing with, with behavioral health crises. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think.
All right, thank you all for coming. Great work and look forward to having a great conference. All right, we will move on to the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and the public. Just a couple of things to talk to you about this evening. Number one, I mentioned this to you all in the email, but you were all invited June 11th, which is Tuesday, and it's the day after our next budget meeting and next regular city commission meeting, unless you all end up meeting for two nights in a row. 6:30, First Dakota Field, Yankton U Soccer is having a open house and celebration. They've invited the city to attend. So I did not get it in this consent calendar because I thought I had more time, but then realized if I put it in the June 10th consent calendar, it wouldn't be 24 hours in advance. So I have notified the press and notifying the public here now and you that there could be a possible quorum that evening at First Dakota Field for open house, I think just kind of tours and showing folks around and the celebration of all the success that Yankton U Soccer has had out there. So wanted to bring that forward to you, also to let you know that we had our opening weekend at the Huether Family Aquatic Center this weekend, and we learned that kids don't care how cold it is or how much the wind is blowing, they still show up. We have record numbers of kids, probably because of the weather, but we did have a good opening weekend and, and our staff is adjusting, and I think maybe it was good to have a cooler weather weekend so they can get their bearings and get geared up because when the heat hits, they'll be, it'll be busy. And it was busier today, I noticed, than it had been over the weekend. So no real big hiccups to talk about there, but we're just open and ready for summer. I don't really have any other business mayor for the commission to talk about, but if there's questions or folks want updates, I would like to give an update on West Side Park Pond, so before I take questions, I'll do that. The liner has been installed, the seams have been inspected, and the contractors put in an amount of water to determine whether or not, how we're doing. So far, so good, the water has stayed. So the next step now is sort of the, a lot of the handwork, a lot of labor, and that's moving the rock and the clay. We're going to have some questionable weather at the end of this week, so maybe not a lot of work will happen then, but so far it looks, it appears as though that liner is holding water. Once the rest of the work is done, they'll continue to fill with water. So we're watching that carefully and, but I felt like we had one small step for West Side Park, one huge step for the city manager. Thank you, but I'll happy answer questions.
Questions for the city manager? I, I was one of the people that was at the Huether Center on day one with my son, and I can tell you, he could be blue, but he would still be in the water. So it was not that cold, but there were a good number of people there. So that was a, it's always a great facility to be at. Any other questions for the city manager? Comments? Okay. All right, thank you. Now's the time for public appearances. Would anyone like to appear to talk to the state commission about an item that is not on the agenda? If you would, please approach the podium and state your name.
Hello, my name's Chris Thury. I'm the Executive Director at the center. You probably remember me, I was here in March talking about our Rock-a-Thon. I, I wanted to come tonight just to give you a big heartfelt thank you for all the support we get from the city, the commission, the community on what we do at the center. And I have a real quick success story I want to share with you. Last month, we actually had a client call in and just to tell us what, how great his meal was. And our Meals on Wheels coordinator, Mandy, had, you know, said, well, that's great. He was only getting one meal a week. So she had asked him, would you like to have more meals per week? And he said, well, I can only afford the one meal per week. And so she did a little probing and got his income, and this, this gentleman only receives $589 a month in SSI and $160 a month for EBT. So she immediately said, how about, how would you feel if we could offer you seven meals a week at no charge? And she told me he just was so grateful, it brought him to tears. And it even gets better because he, a week later, he asked his caregiver to bring him to the center so he could meet the people that are taking care of him. And so he did, he came in, I, he introduced himself, his name is Dale. He, he was so grateful, and I said, well, you didn't meet everyone because he's not met all of you that helped. I said, you know, you've met some of us, but not all of us, and a good portion of you people in this room helped with our last Rock-a-Thon, which, as you know, funds those meals. Forty-two Rockers raised $68,482 in a short period of time, and of course, you know, that's going to feed a lot of people and make a huge impact. And just to give you another pat on the back, those funds in excess of at least 10% came from people in this room. So you're, you know, I thank you very much for that support. So that's, that's all I wanted to say was thank you. This guy's getting meals, there's more people out there that need the help, and we have $68,000 to do it. So send them our way if you have them. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Chris. The stories certainly help add, kind of give us some value for all the work that you do at the center. Thank you. Any other public appearances about something that is not on the agenda? Saying no movement. And move on to the consent agenda. Before you, you have one item on the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Move to approve? Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, motion carries. Next is the old business section of the agenda. Item one, public hearing for sale of alcohol beverages. Consideration of memorandum 24-114 regarding requests for a special on-sale malt beverage retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for one day, June 29th, 2024, from the center, 900 Whiting Drive. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion by the commission? Saying none, anyone from the public? Roll call.
Mosher?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Schram?
Aye. Motion carries. Number two, consideration of memorandum 24-115 regarding a request for a special on-sale malt beverage retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for July 4th, 2024, and July 5th, 2024, and August 8th, 2024, from Ben's Brew Station, 719 Walnut Street. The events will take place at Riverside Park. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Saying none, anyone from the public? Roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Mayor Schram?
Aye. Motion carries. Number three, consideration of memorandum 24-116 regarding a request for a special on-sale malt beverage retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for the following dates, July 11th, July 18th, July 25th, and August 1st, 2024, from Ben's Brew Station for music at the Meridian, and these events will take place at the lawn and green space, west side of Meridian Bridge, and the enclosed area of Levy Street. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? Roll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Schram?
Aye. Motion carries. Number four, consideration of memorandum 24-117 regarding requests for a special on-sale liquor license for one day, June 7th, 2024, from O'Malley's Irish Pub. This is an NRA banquet, and the event will take place at the NFAA Eastern Yankton Archery Center. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Anyone from the public would like to make comment? Saying none, roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Schram?
Aye. Motion carries. Number six is the consideration of memorandum 24-121 regarding ordinance number 1079, which is an ordinance amending the licensing structure for amusement businesses regulated by the city of Yankton and moving applicable licensing ordinances to Chapter 13 of the Yankton Municipal Code of Ordinances. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion from the commission? Saying none, anyone from the public? Roll call.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Schram?
Aye. Motion carries. Number five, consideration of memorandum 24-118 regarding requests for transfer ownership of a restaurant retail on-sale liquor license and transfer of ownership of a retail on-sale liquor license from Bernard Properties LLC to Riverfront Brewery, Inc. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Move to approve the transfer.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? Roll call.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Mayor Schram?
Aye. Motion carries. Number seven, consideration of memorandum 24-122 regarding ordinance number 1080, an ordinance updating Chapter 3 of the Yankton Municipal Code of Ordinances. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, anyone from the public? Saying no movement. Roll call.
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Mayor Schram?
Aye. Motion carries. That concludes the old business section of our agenda. Moving on to new business. Item number one, consideration of memorandum 24-119 recommending the delay for the requirement for sidewalk installation as described in the Yankton School District Letter of Request and depicted in the associated site plan. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? Mike, did you have anything? I set your mic on. Okay, all right. Saying no movement from the public? Roll call.
Mosher?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Schram?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to number two, consideration of memorandum 24-120 recommending that the city commission award the contract for the cold-applied plastic pavement marking installation project to Traffic Solutions, Inc. of Harrisburg, South Dakota, in the amount of $54,077. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Anyone from the public would like to speak? Saying none, roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Mayor Schram?
Motion carries. Number three is consideration of memorandum 24-123 recommending that the city commission approve Resolution 24-26 agreeing to the assignment of the option to purchase the described property and authorizing the city manager to execute all associated documents, including purchase agreements and transfer documents. Before I take a, ask for what the commission's approval is or motion is, I would like City Manager Leon to maybe run through this a little bit and place a Dave Sarda, I mean, Dave Mingo.
Yes. Certainly, Honorable Mayor. Dave Sarda can certainly also add if he'd like to, but you'll remember, commission, that you worked together to approve an offer to acquire an option to purchase Lot 3, Block 1, a Mead's Edition in 2023, and you can see in the exhibit there what that looks like. The agreement's with Corner Kick LLC, Stephanie Tamasia, and Van's Brunkirk Properties. David Hosmer, who is here this evening, if you have additional questions for him, is the counsel for the developer. The plan was to provide the developer some time to package some development projects together so that they can build out. And I believe we mentioned at the time that really the market dictates, dictates the timing of those types of things, so, you know, the phases were set as planned, but not necessarily set in stone, I think is a good way to say it. And so at this time, the developer does have some interest in a 2024 project. On your map there, the interest is for the area that is labeled Phase 3 of the, of the layout, and so if you'll take a look at that, the proposed project is an office and professional building, and the initial concept, you might recall that we talked about, identified that Phase 3 for housing, but the proposed office building, staff believes is a good fit, it's appropriate for the zoning there, and we know as those being involved in, in development projects that when things come together, they come together. So sometimes while you have the plans in place, if you have something that's ready to move forward, it's good to do that, strike when the iron's hot, so that more development can, can fall, come forward as well. So the, as the project is proposed, the developer does need to receive your approval And if approved, all those original provisions, including the price per acre, will still apply. Additionally, the city created some covenants. Those are in Exhibit A and mentioned as well. And B, those still apply. If you approve this tonight, all the action does is simply assigns the agreement to a different developer for the Phase 3 area that's identified. So staff is recommending that the City Commission approve that resolution before you this evening, agreeing to the assignment of the option to purchase, sorry, my voice is going, the described property, and authorizing the City Manager to execute the documents associated with, including the purchase agreement, so that can be transferred. And I'm sure Mr. Hosmer would be happy to answer questions as well. I can also connect with Dave Mingo if you have more detailed questions about the development or how it came together.
Just a point of clarification, just to remind you, the way the option is structured, the property is still technically for sale. So if the, the purchase has not been exercised, someone else could come along and present an offer, and that would, of course, trigger timeframes for the option to be exercised. Also, this particular property, it would be subject to the design approval by staff. So the city does have a measure of control over what the structure will look like, if not what it's going to be used for. So just wanted you guys to, to remember that aspect of this deal as you consider whether to approve this transfer.
Any thoughts from the Commission? If I remember correctly, when we were discussing this originally, the, you know, the idea of multifamily housing was attractive because we are in such a shortage. Now there are three apartment complex projects going on in various phases, and so I also know there is a strong shortage of office space. Just professionally, you know, there's, it's, it's hard to find. So I think either one would be a good fit. We need both. So it, in my mind, this makes sense. Any other thoughts, comments, questions? Make Mr. Hosmer sweat a little bit.
Do we have any idea what that looks like, design-wise? Are we talking like multi-story? Are we, are we even that, that far down the track yet?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Yankton City Commission Board, I, the designs were actually completed for another tract of property across the highway, and so the actual build itself, the, the structure of the building is pretty much done. I think they're situating it for that particular lot. My, my understanding is, is that it will only be one story, but it will have four bays, so it'll have four healthcare-related businesses. I should also make one clarification. The request is for 2.16 acres from the purchase. When the plat was created, it was 2.49 acres, and when it was resubmitted to the potential buyer, the Assenee, it showed the extent of the, the build outline. So when the developers started putting it together, they thought that the build outline was the lot line. And so they assumed that the purchase was for 2.49 acres. So they, they're a long ways into the design, and they don't want to start over. So we've consented, if the board would also grant that, to sell 2.49 acres for virtually the same price, $4,000 more, and they would then be able to construct the designs and not have to start over. I felt that was fairly fair because they'd already started across the street and came over. So I'd be more than happy to answer any other questions, too.
What's the approximate square footage?
That I can't answer. Steve Van Buskirk is the guy who's been working on that, and I have not, I have seen an aerial plan, but I've not seen the, the actual square footage. Minuscule ideas are.
Any other questions for Mr. Hosmer?
Come on. You've got something.
I would say if approved tonight, when does this, when would this take place and when would we see the build-out started?
My understanding from today is that he's not, they will not be completed until the fall of 2025. I was surprised by that, but my understanding is that that's going to take that long for it to be completed. So.
That timeframe does not conflict with the, the option. Phase 3 was planned out to be the last area to be developed, so it doesn't time out the option for that area of land.
And while Phase 3 is what's on the agenda, I am curious how Phase 2 and 1 are looking?
Well, that's a good question. So Phase 1 was for an outside, large company, and the company has not given us a hard no, but they have said that they have decided that they're not interested at this moment because the labor supply in Yankton is so poor. I thought you might be interested in this. So the reason, we used to think that the best way to measure labor supply was by the number of people working, the number of people employed, and then you would use our, our retail numbers from, what, 75 miles one way, 50 another, et cetera, et cetera. But they use cell phone numbers. Yes, they have targeted cell phone numbers from the, from the, from the actual area, and they've concluded that that, in line with the retail numbers for people to hire, have caused them some problems. So they'd said, we're not going to do it right now. We had another purchaser who was interested and thought that they would be an extraordinarily good, fantastic business for that location. And just as we were about ready to sit down, they said that they were going to pull all projects from the state of South Dakota and Iowa, Nebraska. Don't know why. We're going to re-approach them again. It would be a large, a large business for that, that area, but we'll continue to try for that one. You probably want to know about the housing. I'll tell you what happened in the housing relative to that. So we conducted an analysis, and the price, if you can imagine this, if you're going to build an apartment, you have to identify what the value is, how much it costs for a particular location, and how much, how many square feet, et cetera.